I believe this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
The select board's rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members in the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions or comments are be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be only two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedures are posted in the town hall and available for everyone to review. Thank you.
All right. So we have our chair, my teacher, Jessica Van Orte, Tom Collard, Rich Hewlett. I'm Kristin Powers, and Bob Jones will be...
Just pulled in.
Joining us momentarily.
Bob and I were pulled up for the exact same reason, because of a wide load coming through the...
Oh, God.
We apologize. I'm apologizing jointly for you for the wide load that held us up.
I had to follow him over too.
And here's Bob Jones. Okay, I've got everybody else sign in. You've got our talking stick this evening, so if you are a member of the public, make sure to turn that baby on and talk into it, not with it. And for the agenda tonight, just one addition, which is an executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees. And the minutes that need approval are from our last meeting, which was September 2nd.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Thank you.
Second post.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
So we have no pre-requested appearances, and...
No announcements.
I personally have no announcements. I don't know if anybody else does.
Zoning administrator, Nancy?
Thank you. So we have thirty-one permits issued to date. There was a meeting of the DRB last week, and they approved a permit for Contractor's Yard, and that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for zoning administrator? Thanks for joining us. Anything from the planning commission? That was last week. Vote for them.
Thank you. Week of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, grading of roads, Kelly Hill, Rupert Hill, and Way Hill Road. Trucking services, we owed to Rupert, so we're even with them now. Continue to clean ditches on one fifty-three and River Road. Week of September first, continue to clean ditches one fifty-three River Road. Fix all hydroclines on the backhoe, graded Tadmer Road. Inspection and cleaning of manhole covers on River Road, oh, one fifty-three. Conducted interview for open job position. Week of September eighth, finished the cleanup on River Road. Graded Herrick Brook, Townsley. Hauled shirt pack for two days for the shoulder after the paving. Conducted an interview for open job position. Stone ditches on, September fifteenth, week of that, stone ditches on series of culverts on River Road, one fifty-three intersection. And then fix washouts and grade Way Hill Road section. Fix and restart, check Clark sign. The next week, hopefully, we'll have a better plan to haul in winter sand and materials for Pollet and West Pollet Town Roaches.
Anybody have any questions for James? Any additional comments on anything you reported on?
I guess I just, I had a couple of questions. Have you talked with Tim from Wilk Paving or anybody from Wilk?
Uh, I have. After we met over there, I called him. We talked, because he was the one that wanted just like inspection and cleaning of, so if they put risers in...
Sure.
They're not sitting on dirt and all that, so that was the week of... Oh, he doesn't have it. Yeah, fifteen, so that's what we did, because I also, um, you, the, I forgot her name in that text message.
Oh, Jill.
Jill, so I...
The sewer plant?
Right, so for the manholes and stuff.
Yeah.
So I sent her the pictures. I sent you and Bob also the picture. So I don't know if she's taking that as part of the inspection, the photos or not, because I haven't heard any...
Yeah, but reached back out to her. It doesn't, doesn't hurt to give her a little nudge. Is that, is that all right? Are you okay with these?
Yeah.
Whatever. She's more than likely, they run quite a few systems up north. She lives in Bristol.
Okay.
So they run, they run several systems up that way too, so she's pretty spread thin.
Yeah. So I just sent those, because she wanted the pictures. I sent them, so she has those.
So it, I think the best course of action would be for you to send her another text and say, "Everything looking all right?" Or, "Do you want me to meet you?" Because she tries to get down here once a week.
Yeah.
And maybe if you guys could meet, it would probably be a good thing just to meet to, you know, and talk a little bit. I know she, she said she needed to look at it, and I saw the text message too, and it kinda, I don't know if it just kinda seemed...
Yeah, that's why I sent the pictures. I didn't know if she couldn't make it, and if the pictures would be all right. I still have them if anyone needs them. We have one ring and manhole cover set, so if any of them, because there's nothing crazy for damage, there's some plow marks, but nothing that impedes them from functioning. But they're all clean. We lifted them up, cleaned the rings, if they need to have risers installed, but they're pretty good.
Good.
One more thing. I saw Ralph Sheldon yesterday afternoon, and I completely forgot to ask him about the mowing tractor.
Oh, yeah.
Has he looked at that or worked on that?
He's looked at it, and then when I met with you guys, he had gotten back to me, because he said, "Get, get ahold of them." So he did get back to me. He's booked, busy, so I didn't know if, how we wanted to proceed with the tractor, but, because he had told me what need, what pretty much needs to be done, and I said, "We can help, you know, if we need to take the mower off and help out in that way," or, you know.
Okay. Well, I can reach out to him tomorrow and just see if, if it's something that he can't do, we've got to get it done, because even the paving crews really would like that mowed before they pave, and there's a lot of, it'd be nice to get everything mowed.
Yeah. And then the leak blowing afterwards.
Right, right. So I can, I can reach out to him. I see him on a regular basis.
Yes, sir.
And just see if it's something he can get done fairly quickly for us. If not, we'll figure something else, else out.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the road form?
Well, there was an email that came in for the FY twenty-six grants and aid. That was awarded to us, which is exciting. Even more exciting, because I forgot that we even applied for it, so it was a beautiful surprise. Okay, so it was, it's for the best management practices through, with the MRGP.
The MFPs?
The MFPs for the MRGP. We love those. So we got twenty thousand dollars, and there's a five thousand dollar match or in-kind service, and we have the grant agreement, and so if the board would like to accept it, and the Highway Department is on board with performing the work to do it, we just have to sign, make a motion and sign that grant agreement.
And what was a particular project we had in mind?
That is such a fine question. It's a, it's about...
Are these the hydrologically connected roadways, I think, in general?
Yeah.
These are the ones that they're sort of getting in the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, when I was road liaison a couple years ago, that's what it was for, was the hydrologically connected.
Were you for like the Kelly Hill Road project?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it's like, yeah, that, it was for that one. It's, half our roads are hydrologically connected.
Yeah, it's in conjunction with our municipal roads general permit, which is what the MRGP stands for. And so I, if, I don't feel great about saying it, because I'm not totally confident in it, but my memory is that it's doing the things that are meant to help encourage better care of the roads that contribute to runoff that goes into our waterways. So things like improving the crowning of the roads and clearing out the ditches and adding different drainage, things of that nature, kind of like what we did on Herrick Brook Road many, many years ago. So, and these are, there's generally an inventory, a road inventory of projects that they have in mind for us as well, which is what I think those, that gentleman that we were talking about earlier, Stephanie and Ethan, helped to do. So I believe it's all in conjunction with that. Things we've done many times before, but I have a hard time cementing into my brain. Anyway, does everybody feel really confident about that?
Yeah.
I believe that you are accurate in your assessment.
Okay, thank you.
And there's...
Just needed a little, a little confidence there.
High priority.
That's what I mean, that road inventory of like where we're at currently and trying to get ourselves up to a certain point by a certain time with the different road segments. I believe that's what this is in conjunction with, but if I'm totally off-base, so sorry.
Do we have a motion to accept that grant?
I will make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Everybody sign or just me?
Just, um, just you over on the, over on the left.
Looking at you and thinking of things that I...
And then I have one other. I sent it to both you two, Julie and James, earlier, but we got an email about closing out a grant. Is that, is that what you were about to talk about? Is that on your radar?
It's not what I'm about to talk about. It is on my radar. They needed one final piece of information. I sent it to them at the beginning of this week. I have not heard confirmation back that it has been approved, but I did get a confirmation back that they acknowledged my email that provided them with that one final detail.
Perfect.
And then I have in my memo to discuss later, so we can discuss it then if you would like, but there's also an email that went around about Vtrans having two different programs for fiscal year twenty-six. One is a transportation alternatives program, and one is a municipal highway stormwater mitigation program, and there's some monies in there. As far as like, I looked, I left you a note, but it looks like, oh, the, the tap, the first one, is kind of some foo-foo stuff that I don't think is necessarily relevant for us, like amphibian crossings and things like that, that I know have happened in other places where there's an ability to have like underground crossings for, for wildlife, and things like road improvements for pedestrians and bicyclists and things of that nature, which I think we've already crossed that bridge. But there's also some money in that for culverts for pollution control, and then the municipal highway and stormwater mitigation. There's a lot of stuff in there for culvert replacement. There's also stuff in there for salt sheds, which I know we had talked about, so I think that this is a longer discussion that you might want to have about salt shed, because I do know the, the current garage location, the salt shed, I think still needs some work. Sure James can speak to that. But if we're moving the salt shed, would it make sense to do that? Would it make sense to apply mostly for culverts and then for some salt shed repairs? Or does it make sense to try and do something at the West Pollet facility? I don't know. So you can talk about that now and ignore that part in my memo. I think that might make more sense.
Can I add one thing to that? We had used the transport, we've, we've been awarded the Transportation Alternatives Grant before, and we use that for advanced warning signs, intersection signage, stop bars, stop ahead markings. So that was the one on the North Pollet Road. So programs of that nature, I believe. Or that may be the highway safety improvement, but we, I think we've also...
I think that was highway safety improvement, because the transportation alternatives is very much about alternative modes of transportation.
Yeah. Okay, so that was highway safety improvement. But I feel like we've also been awarded the transportation, or we've, we've dove into that before too, so that's good, that we've thrown our hats in the ring.
Thank you. Assessors, oh, Julie?
Okay, so I feel like I brought a question and didn't get an answer, so I'm going to bring it up again and just, just gonna, we're just gonna keep hitting this until we get somewhere. Applications are due November seventh. I think if you want to apply for either of these, I can forward you that, like, I just want a next step before we move on from this topic. So I can forward that email to all of you. We can put it on next meeting or something. I just don't want to walk away with absolutely no discussion or no plan for a discussion in the future.
Okay. And I would suggest you forward it to us all, and we'll put it on next meeting's highway agenda to, or highway report to discuss that, determine what's going to be most beneficial to the town.
Sorry for being, sorry for being pushy. I just, I want to make sure things don't...
No, that's absolutely the right thing to do. Anything from the assessors?
Yes. So there is an updated errors and omissions report that the assessor's office is requesting is reviewed and signed. There was an error on the grand list for this particular parcel, and the narrative for the acreage was not updated in the grand list after a subdivision. The acreage was changed in the CAMA software from twenty acres to three acres, and the value for the acreage was entered in the grand list correctly. However, the narrative still showed twenty acres. This was brought to their attention by the property owner and has been corrected, and the treasurer will be issuing a revised tax bill, and they are sending this as an advisory note to the board.
But the actual number is the same, right?
So the assessed value hasn't changed. It's just that little corner on the top right-hand side of your tax bill that indicates how many acres you're being charged for. That, that little narrative had not been changed to reflect what the property tax bill, or what the property record card reflected, but there was no change in actual value of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like a small error.
I'll make a motion that we...
Oh, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Tom Clark's memo.
No report at this meeting.
No report for this meeting, okay. Julie, you're up.
Okay, great. Pretty short, two warrants this week. Payrolls, nine thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars eighty-eight cents. The accounts payable is one million three hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred three dollars and eighty-six cents. This includes the first half of the school taxes. The breakdown is general fund, one million three hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred seventeen dollars seventy-three cents. Highway, twelve thousand seven hundred dollars twelve cents. Wastewater, seven thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. I will report on tax collection at the next meeting. I have not had time to put that Excel spreadsheet together. I will tell you, I think it went really well. I haven't had time to dive deep, but I think that we had more online payments this year than we've had before, so that's been helpful. I did have some complaints regarding a current use issue. A lot of people were issued revised tax bill because of a current use rounding thing. So if you had a property that had a current use reduction value of like two hundred seventy two thousand one hundred eighty dollars, then you got a, you would get a tax bill, the original tax bill would maybe be like two seventy-two, and then the revised tax bill would go back to the unrounded number. So I sent a lot of tax bills to people that were like pennies in difference, and people were frustrated about that, which is understandable. It was frustrating to me, to be honest, because I'm sending tax bills and, at a cost of seventy-four cents just in postage, to collect forty-eight cents in additional money. So it didn't make a ton of sense to me, but I'm statute, I'm like required by statute to send people an accurate tax bill. So I don't know exactly where that issue falls. I'm happy to look into it, if you would like me to look into it, because it was frustrating, and I don't want to see it happen again in the future.
I think it would be important to, to know how to alleviate that from next year's tax bill, so the board feel it correct to try and determine how we can not have that issue next year.
I agree.
Okay.
Is that a state thing, sending you the information?
I don't know. So, and then the last thing we had on there, we already discussed, so that is it for me.
Well, I'll make the motion for the warrants. I move that we approve payroll warrant two six zero one five and accounts payable warrant two six zero one seven.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
Oh, I think this is the one that Julie's going to mail to us.
Right, yes, that's the information regarding... Question. Anything else for the treasurer tonight? Thank you for joining us, Julie. Emergency management?
There's no report, however, Bob did send an email, which I forwarded out to everybody this evening, stating that Pollet again qualifies for the highest level of ERAF funding, which is the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund. We may recall, Vermont's ERAF provides state funding to match FEMA public assistance after federally declared disasters. Eligible public repair costs are generally reimbursed by FEMA at seventy-five percent, with the state matching a minimum of seven point five percent. The state will increase its match to twelve point five percent or seventeen point five percent if communities take certain steps to reduce flood risk. An ERAF summary report is attached showing that Pollet qualifies for a state match of seventeen point five percent. This is a great accomplishment and reflects the town's efforts to, one, participate in the National Flood Insurance Program; two, adopt Vtrans-approved road and bridge standards; three, annually adopt a local emergency management plan; four, have a current FEMA-approved local hazard mitigation plan; and five, adopt river corridor bylaws. The town's dedication towards flood resilience will serve the community well in the event you are impacted by future, not, future natural disasters. I encourage you to share this information with your select board. Congratulations and keep up the good work. We're here to help if you need it. And that came from Maggie O'Brien with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, so good news for Pollet.
Okay, Julie, I think Bob and I were involved in a, a little back and forth, but he got a letter from the Pollet Rescue Squad that they have to rea...
Granville Rescue Squad, yeah.
Well, the Granville Rescue Squad, the Pollet has to send a letter of support, because they have to reapply for their Newark State, or Vermont State license. So Bob wrote a letter of support, and I signed it, and we sent it back, so we're all good with that. He wrote a nice letter that we've, you know, they've been serving us for, since like sixty-six or something like that. So that's all been taken care of, so.
Oh, and just an aside, kind of on emergency management, I don't know if anyone's seen the new fire truck, but I walked by and was talking to John Weiss about it. So the, the Pollet Fire Department has been very resourceful. They wanted to get a new brush truck, and it, to get it new, it would have cost three hundred thousand dollars, and they decided they didn't want to do that, so they built it. They got the chassis, and they put on some boxes on the back and a bunch of other stuff, and it, you can see it sitting outside when you drive past it, and it looks really nice, and they saved a lot of money doing it. So coming up soon, they're going to have a little like christening party for it, like they did last year with the other trucks, so look forward to that.
Excellent. Health officer? Nothing. Facilities report?
I have. We've been going back and forth for the last, actually, couple of years about the heating system in the sewer plant. Julie noticed that all of a sudden it was going through, what, like two thousand dollars worth of propane a month?
I don't remember what it was, but it was crazy.
Ridiculous, ridiculous amount. So Jake come over and did some research and found that critters had got into all the ductwork up over the, in this particular portion is what heats the office and the lapsed area of the sewer plant. So critters had got up and all the duct, the spiral ductwork had all been eaten and two of the parts, so it was just blowing the heat up top. We got it copped up for now, and in the process, he looked at it, and the heater itself is grossly oversized for the size of the space.
I remember you saying that.
So that was wasted, is wasting a great deal of...
That was wasted, is wasting a great deal of propane. So we've been back and forth and because of the environment, he's been a little bit leery on, on what he feels is the, the best case because he's already, in, in where the actual treatment occurs, he's already changed both of those heaters out because when they did the upgrade, they didn't put heaters that were, um, built to, and withstand that environment in there.
Yeah, 'cause it corrodes, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So he got the correct heaters and changed both of those out. And now he's been concerned about what would be the best long-term solution. And he feels that, uh, heat pump for the laboratory and office area, and then put some electric baseboards in the bathroom to keep, to keep that maintained. So I sent that, he got that bit to us and I said, shared it all with everybody today. I don't know if everybody got a chance to read it, but he would install a twenty-four K CM Sung Max heat pump, mount indoor unit, run lines, uh, communi- communication wire drain hose, outdoor unit, pressure test purge, evacuate, go through startup procedure, remove existing furnace from AC with a quote that someone will have to fix a sheet rock in the mechanical room where the vents go into the attic. Uh, one year labor extended to two years with service at one year after installation. And install electric seventy inches of baseboard with built-in thermostat. Take out old furnace circuit and turn that into electric heater circuit. He would do this complete job for nine thousand five seventy-nine. We had, uh, had a little discussion, I shared that with Jill today. And she was curious about if the heat pump would work at, when we were, uh, when it got extremely cold because she's familiar with the heat pump. So I, I texted Jake and asked him and he said this particular model heat pump is good to minus thirteen. So we should be, and he feels that would-
There might be like one night a year it gets below that, but-
And with the electric baseboard, and he also thought, um, that this, the room that he pumps in only has two outside walls. So that's a huge benefit too, and all the rest of the area is heated. So he feels very confident that this will, this will do the job.
So when he says it's good up to thirteen below, it works well below thir- negative thirteen, it just loses its efficiency, correct?
I believe that, like, like at thirteen below, it's not gonna work. It's, you know, it could, it could free, it could freeze up or something, it could stop at thirteen below.
My understanding with those was they lose their, they continue to work when it's really cold. They just lose their efficiency where other fuel types would be. Because we don't want it not to work when it gets below thirteen.
That's my understanding too, Rich, is that it will still run, it won't like freeze up, but it won't keep the temperature at sixty in the room. Yeah, like it might get colder.
It won't meet, it probably won't meet the rated performance standards. Okay, I, I can find a little bit more information than that, but-
I'm sure, I'm sure he'll know if you ask him about it.
He doesn't feel that, that it will be a problem. And I believe is not, has an alarm system too, and I believe that there's low temperatures alarms in there anyway. So if something, if something was to go wrong.
Yeah, and that's just for the one area, it's not for like the main area.
It's not for the main area, those have the two big propane heaters in there for the main treatment area.
That was my concern, exactly what Rich is, 'cause even though it'll take it till minus thirteen, it loses its efficiency. It may be twenty above and then it goes backwards for us as a town. The other question I had in order to prevent that efficiency of losing that, is this area an area where you could put a propane wall heater in? 'Cause you can buy with some of those wall paint, uh, wall units for like twenty-six, twenty-eight hundred dollars. And it's a propane and then-
So we could have that as a, as a backup unit for, in the event that, that the, the heat pump was not able to keep up.
And, and that's exactly what we did because there's certain, when you get below that efficiency, you're, you're better off shutting off the heat exchangers that we have and switch to that. So it's a question for Jake.
I can gather more information and come back to this.
Also, I know Jill asked who would fix the sheet rock. That was then her question.
I haven't really come up with that one yet.
Julie should be there next Monday.
She's a practical person, she's like, who's gonna fix that sheet rock?
There were two good questions, I was glad to see them.
Frank? You're good at sheet rock? Nice.
No, no. Jessica was here and-
Take the, take the talking stick.
Yeah, uh, the ener- the people came down from the engineering firm, the people who were gonna do the MERP thing, it got ordered that.
I'm gonna talk about that later.
And part of that program is a geothermal with the heat pump. So you wouldn't have the temperature differential where you're doing an air exchange to a temperature outside that's that cold. You'd still have the heat pump.
Ain't gonna do that for nine grand.
That's, but that's-
Not, not for that bill.
Not for that price.
No, no, but you, I don't know if, if something would be doable there.
I'll have more information for the next meeting.
And I would be more glad to research somebody for the sheet rock after we get to that point.
I'm thinking that we can, that shouldn't be too big of a deal.
No, I think that that would be an easier task.
Yes. Okay, so we're, that's where we're at with that. Anything else with the?
Oh, I can, I can do it under facilities, sure. Um, so I have some updates on the MERP grant. So last Fri- uh, Thursday, when we were both here? Yeah, last Thursday, Tom and I were both here. And, um, I was here to let in an engineer from the firm Architend that we are working with for the energy efficiency grant, the MERP grant. And so the engineer, um, took, took measurements in both buildings, the town hall and over in the library, and did need to be let into all the rooms. So I let her into everybody's office and she measured them and I locked back up again afterwards. Um, and so as we were moving forward with this, one of the things that I've been tasked to help find is, um, so they're gonna be coming up with a proposal for us with the diff- costs of various different things that we might do. And then we'll be needing to make some decisions about what exactly we want to spend the money on. But in order to come up with the proposal, they also, it would help them a great deal if they had, um, a number of drawings and documents that have been identified. So I have got hold of, there's those, all those big, um, those are the architectural drawings from the work that was done in here when we put in the elevator. And so those are architectural drawings of all of town halls. So I've sent that to them. Um, they also were looking for some architectural drawings of the library. And I got the library board on that. And, um, Lauren got in touch with Marty Kravitt, who has some drawings. So we're gonna get hold of those and scan them and get the, the library drawings of the work that was done at the library. Um, there's one other thing that, so Shelley, who's the person in charge at Architend, said that in one of the, she's been reading through the various, um, history of these two buildings, right? And one thing that she heard about and wants to see if she can find documentation of is evidently in 2013, we got an energy audit. And then at that time, it says that the ceiling of the auditorium was air sealed and the insulation was added. So she is hoping that we can find the information from that 2013 energy audit. Does anyone here know who was on the select board at that time, what, where that might be? Or where I could look for it?
It might be in the vault, when you go in, go on the left-hand side, over in the back, there's a box there. It might be in there. I remember it happening.
Yeah.
Um, it might be there. I can look tomorrow.
That would be really great, yeah. I mean, I could also come down and look. I was also wondering about that cabinet there, if there's anything in that cabinet.
Yeah, I've never done anything in there, but smaller people have, so, yeah.
There is, I know, I haven't gone all the way through those filing cabinets. Honestly, that's something that's like on my, to, to my dream list. To like clean that area out and organize it, so that's a possibility as well.
Yeah. I've been active in one of those drawers over the years.
Are they, are they locked?
No, um, they shouldn't be.
Okay.
You've gotta just kinda like put your hip into the bottom one, you know?
Okay.
You've gotta close all the drawers to be able to open one of the drawers. It's self-locking because it's very hard to open, but if it is locked.
Sue, when do you wanna look at, for things tomorrow? I'm available in the morning.
Whenever Deb opens up, 'cause I, I can't get to the door.
Okay. Yeah.
Question?
I don't think I have any, I need to get to the post office at some point in the morning. And other than that, I can come in and help with stuff.
Yeah, I can come down at ten and we can look around and try to find them.
Would there have been a bill that we could go back and see who?
It was-
In our accounting, do our company go back to that or is that more of an archives?
The accounting might, but do I have the invoice? I'm not statutorily required to keep an invoice for more than twelve years, so probably not.
Who, maybe?
Oh, it was, um-
Do you remember who did it?
Yeah.
'Cause that would reach out to them too, if we can't find it here, that's why I'm asking. Not that I didn't see the invoice.
Yeah.
I know who it was.
I, I know, you and I were both on the board when that happened, so I don't-
Your filing cabinet?
How about you, Bob? You were on the board too.
I don't think you're in.
We did, but if you did-
Weatherization works.
Right, yeah.
Bill Morrissey, but, but I'm sure it was free.
Yeah. Weatherization works, didn't it?
Yeah, but I can look in there.
Yeah, we'll look in the morning, see what we can find. Great. Yes, that was, that was the one thing they really wanted to look at because what they're doing right now is basically very similar to that. It's like the energy improvements.
Right.
And then, um, once they have put together, um, their initial, um, sort of proposal with how much various things would cost, then we'll get a schedule of the meetings that they're gonna have. They'll wanna meet with, there's, um, two members of the planning mission and two library board members who wanna be involved. So that group will probably meet. And then when we come up with, uh, what we actually want, what that group suggests, then they'll bring that to the select board to make final decisions about, 'cause there's gonna be some options for what we can do, I'm sure. Yeah, that's where that's at. They've been really great to work with so far, um, the firm Architend. They, um, they seem to really know their stuff and they're very, very responsive to get hold of, so that's great.
Very good. Anything else on the facilities? You got something, Tom?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Uh, first thing that's brought to our attention, that we had some weeds and trees down being close to the building. I have spoke to both neighboring landowners and they are fine with us tidying it up. So I asked for ten feet off the building. And I guess the question I have for the board is, is that something we should have our town crew? Or should we look at a third party? I don't think it'd be a lot of time, but I know that we got a lot of projects coming up with the blacktop project coming up too. So I didn't know what the board's liking was there.
I think that'd be a good question for James.
Yeah. What do you think it?
Uh, back here, is it?
Yeah.
So is it just weed whacking, as a quick question?
No, there's gonna be a little chainsaw.
Small trees.
Because, 'cause we got, uh, a limb.
Tom and I walked down there the other day and had a look at it. There are, there are some- There's some trees about this big, about this big going up.
I think you got a crew, James.
No, we did it, we did it all last time, so we could do it. Just I'll, I'll get with you or you get with me.
Yeah, you dropped my text, I come over. My thought is, is we'll just come down this side of the building, ten feet. There's a tree down here that just needs to be limbed a couple. And then as you turn the corner, you'll see where the saplings are growing underneath the, the steps. And then I thought, you know, that'll be the chainsaw part and then the rest will be just weed whacking. And when I spoke to the neighbor that owns the land right directly behind us, he was fine with ten feet. So that's why I said, there's, there's thirty feet wide down there, but we just need to do ten off the building.
We can do that, yeah, as long as Bob and Rich were, yeah, 'cause we've got pretty much mostly everything wrapped up and it's just, we have some downtime.
The, the weed whack, of course, you don't need to bring the weeds out by any means, but the saplings will have to be just brought up.
We'll bring, we'll bring the dump truck, the loader if we need them and then-
But I'll go there, there's probably a dozen and a half, so eighteen saplings down there need to be cut. But they're real small, most of them.
We can do that.
And the condensers units for the air conditioning, you already did some work around them, Julie, or, or do you, you did the side side?
Not, we did the side here.
That's why there's only limbs on that side.
We just did the side.
Okay.
Here, cleaning out. I think Tom went down and just pulled weeds by hand.
I knocked the weeds down around it, but since we got-
When you're down back, just go around the air conditioners and stuff too, so, thank you.
And then the second part, uh, trying to get the buildings painted, the project has turned in. I'm up to four different people I have to meet with. I have asked an individual to come look at the ports on the library to see if we could at least get that patched up before we go into winter. 'Cause I do believe there is water that's leaking around that archway that goes into that nice walkway in there. And it's on the right side as you look at the library. Uh, I had a gentleman that was supposed to meet me here for today, but he had vehicle situation. And my quote, one of the quotes we were supposed to have today got bumped in until tomorrow. But as soon as I receive that quote, so I will pass that on to the board. So that's my, I'm still, I don't see us being able to get this all done before fall and painted because anyone worth their weight in gold is already in the mid-winter to spring.
Yeah.
So that means there's no painting in winter up here anyways, so. But I thought that we at least get that water from stopping going in the library on that flat roof. So we can minimize whatever damages in that wood arch, right? So it's a Band-Aid, but I think it's the right way to go.
While I was talking to Jake, he does have a schedule to come and do the heaters and air conditioners in this building and the library before winter, so everything will be serviced. And Julie?
Just in regards to that, I don't know if you would mind, I guess I'm gonna ask for you to pay for a little extra of his time to just go through the buildings with someone, and I'm happy to volunteer to be that someone, to fully understand all of the thermostats and everything because I find this building incredibly difficult to regulate the heat in.
There's so many different thermostats.
Right, and so if he could just spend, if you wouldn't mind, like, spending the extra money because then I think that we could have a, it would be like having a default troubleshooter and not having to call him every time something wonky is happening.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. It should, should have some, some kind of idea what, what everything does in here.
And honestly, we will save money if we don't accidentally have the upstairs heat to seventy when we don't need it or something like that, which has happened in the past, so.
Anything else for facilities? Waste water, I think, is, she sent the, the reports, everything seems to be in order, so. Metawi School Board, that was last week, right? And Pol- Public Library, do you guys have anything to offer tonight or nothing? Okay, thank you. Hold the unfinished business.
I already did the grant stuff, so we got that.
New business? Public comment? Frank?
Uh, Linda's not here tonight, she's attending the Rutland Regional- Linda's not here tonight, she's attending the Rutland Regional Planning Commission meeting as our delegate. And we still have an alternate position on that. If anybody wants to go and would that be recommended? Do you think, uh, if, can we do somebody besides planning commission people for that position? I think we probably could, couldn't we? Does anybody know for, for the alternate? 'Cause it's all zoomed in, it's all electric, you know, meeting-wise, it's all Microsoft Teams. That's something to find out, maybe, see if you could take somebody for them.
The planning commission could find that out.
Yeah.
I, I would encourage that if we do that though, that person, that individual really does have to be bringing that information back to the board. Because I, I found when I was on the planning commission, I brought back information that the town and the planning commission really needed to hear. So if, if they, if they're not willing to come to the planning commission meeting, but they're willing to drop an email and, and, and share all that information and, and it's part of, and we can do it, then something is better than nothing. But I would encourage them to be more involved than they could be.
How much of it was highway-related and that you experienced when you were on?
I do believe that I was able, when I was on there, to get the blacktop from, uh, coming out of Granville to Blossoms Corner 'cause we were not rated in the top ten during COVID twenty-twenty. And by me sitting in that room, I said to them, we have a- And by me sitting in that room, I said, we have a medical center, we have a gas station. It is the entrance to a very tourist lake. And, and we got bumped right up and we were part of the six that got blacktop. So I think it, that potential is, is, is important to be there. Well, I couldn't give you a percentage and I think that's gonna vary every year anyways.
What was the general makeup of the fellow members of the group that you were with? Where they from?
Okay, so we're at, we're at the point where we're looking for another one, another, uh, subs- an alternative. So we have, we have a, a member right now. We're just looking for an alternate member, so it's not like we're in the dark, so just keep passing the word.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other newer unfinished, uh, good, public comment?
Robert's rule says good of the company, I can't remember that.
Took me years in the fairhouse. That's what it started to sound like.
All right.
I'll make a motion we go into executive session to discuss employee labor relations agreements.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry.